It is six thirty-one, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Landale City Council along with the redevelopment successor agency. Meeting to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Here.
Councilmember Kearney.
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, madam. I'm gonna ask Councilmember Pat Kearney to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and Pastor Dwight Dooley from Cavery Chapel of South Bay will lead us in a word of inspiration.
Place your right hand over your heart and repeat along with me, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Please remain standing.
It's always a pleasure to be here with the city and especially we're celebrating or getting ready to Christmas and I'm just looking so forward to that. There's such a little bit of trivia that I wanted to bring, not necessarily trivia, but history. Back in three thirty-one A.D., this guy Constantine decided to bring honor to the Lord as he gave his life to Jesus Christ, and on that day was a day that they celebrated a pagan holiday. And that pagan holiday was a sun god, but because Jesus Christ is the son of God, he changed that day to a day to worship Christ and his birth. That was December twenty-fifth. And so we give honor to Constantine, who was a great leader like many of you, and we give honor to you for the work that you're doing and always calling and having pastors come and bring the word of God. This is two thousand and twenty-two years ago was the day that Christ was born, A.D. and Odom and I. And so we give him celebration and praise for what he is doing, bringing communities together and giving the heart to each and every one of you, because you are each called by him for the ministry that you carry out here. Father, I thank you for these who are here and awesome are they in every way. Father, I think of the gift and a calling that you've given so many men and women of this council. Father, I pray that you bless them with wisdom, knowledge, understanding. Father, lead and guide them by your spirit. You have a direction for this city, and so Father, I pray and ask by the power of the Spirit that you just lead and guide them according to your will, Father, as they follow after you. Their heart is to please you, to serve you, and to serve mankind in this community. So Father, bless them with that understanding, wisdom, and knowledge that they need to fulfill the office, Father, that you have given them for your glory, for your purposes. So Father, fill this place pressed down, overflowing with good things. You are the everlasting Father, you are the prince of peace, and we thank you for loving us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you Pastor, Pastor Dooley, for those words of inspiration. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our Sheriff Department. We have a double hitter for you tonight, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Sergeant Osborne, I wanted to let you guys know that on this Sunday, I'll be promoted to the rank of Lieutenant and I'll be assigned to South L.A. Station. So I would like to introduce Sergeant Justin Smith, who will now be the City Sergeant for Landale.
Good evening. Thank you, thank you. Good evening, I have your public safety report for tonight. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for November eighth through the fifth of December. On November twenty-ninth at approximately thirteen twenty hours, Deputy Areola responded to the one-five-two-hundred block of Prairie Avenue regarding a vehicle theft call for service. Deputy Areola discovered the suspect was driving a vehicle while towing a stolen trailer. Deputy Areola learned the stolen trailer was related to a string of vehicle thefts from a Landale business that occurred on November twenty-sixth of this year. The suspect is a Landale resident and was arrested and subsequently booked for receiving stolen property. And regarding traffic, the Sheriff's Department has received complaints about vehicles speeding down Condon Avenue between one hundred and sixty-fourth Street and one hundred and sixty-fifth Street. The Landale mortar deputy Rodriguez responded and monitored traffic and he did not observe any violations. He also conducted direct enforcement on one hundred and forty-seventh Street between Inglewood Avenue and Menzel Avenue, and he cited five vehicles for running the stop sign right there. He issued seventeen citations for various vehicle code violations during the week. And that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay. Any questions of Sergeant Smith?
I just wanna welcome him. Welcome to the city. Congratulations, LT, and you'll love it here.
Thank you.
I as well wanna welcome you to the city of Landale and also wanna thank Lieutenant soon-to-be, I'm sorry, already using the correct designation, but just wanted to thank you for working with us. I know you had a particularly difficult time and tried to do as much as you could, and so I just wanna say we do appreciate during that time and we'll still be calling on you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
Sergeant Osborne, I only met you a year and a half or so, but you'll be greatly missed. I don't know, I guess I'm supposed to call Sergeant Smith now with my issues, but I might call you still even though you're not our sergeant, but we will miss you and welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone in? Yes, ma'am.
First, welcome. I hope you come and get to know our citizens and become one of us. Landale and the Sheriff's Department have always had a very close relationship that I would like to see get back on track as far as you coming out and being with the residents. So, welcome. And to the hardest-working sheriff there behind you, Ricky, congratulations. This is so well-deserved. Continue to recognize and represent your communities wherever you're placed in service. You've done an incredible job for us, and I look forward to you keeping up that personable service that you give us. Thank you.
Sergeant, I too wanna welcome you to the city of Landale. You're gonna enjoy your stay here. Hopefully, it's a long stay. We'd love for you to be a part of other community, not just law enforcement, but an intricate part of the community, so welcome to the city of Landale.
Thank you.
And call on us anytime, because she would call on you, the councilwoman with her issues when she can't reach the therapist. She'll call on you, and so we really appreciate you joining us here in the city of Landale. We've had a lot of good folks come through the city of Landale and was moved on to greater heights and promoted to various positions within the department, and we'll assume that will be the same with you as well, but hopefully you'll stick around for a few.
Right.
For a few good years, because we really appreciate your service, and once again, welcome. And to Lieutenant, Sergeant Lieutenant Osborne, one of the most personable lieutenants that I've had, sergeants, now lieutenant, that I've had the pleasure to work with since I've been on this council, and it's because of that, your approach-ness, you know, to law enforcement, you're just a down-to-earth, you know, community person, another member of our community, that's one of the things that makes you so effective as a sergeant and probably one of the reasons why you was promoted, right, as lieutenant. And you did wonderful work here in the city of Landale as a sergeant, and we know you're gonna do even greater works under your new position, so congratulations and don't be a stranger, and we still have your, by the way, when you guys promote, the phone number's still the same. It always stays the same, and so we will be calling on you just to check in and wish you good luck in your new position. We know you'll do well. Congratulations. And that's the end of our report.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Sergeant. With that, we will move, actually, we have another public safety report from the L.A. County Fire Department. Platoon Chief Mike Lewis is gonna join us. Lewis.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you. My name is Mike Lewis, I'm the duty battalion chief for the county fire department in our field battalion eighteen, and our fire station twenty-one provides service for you here in Landale. Our report consists of the statistics for the month of October. We do have one adjustment to your report that was submitted to you. It was a change in our rescue calls. It should be reflective of one hundred and forty-three responses instead of one forty-four. We just wanna make sure that that's accurate for your city record. In total, for this reporting period, there was one hundred and ninety-five responses. One hundred and forty-three were in our medical and our emergency, emergency medical services area. Six were good intent, and good intent could be somebody thought they saw smoke at a neighbor's house, turned out to be a barbecue. Somebody thought they probably saw a traffic accident, it was a mechanical breakdown of a vehicle. And then one false alarm, which generally is a fire alarm system that may have been activated and reset, and the fire department services were not needed. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, any questions of the report from the chief?
I have none.
Okay. Thank you, battalion chief.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, the next item on the agenda for both the Landale City Council and the redevelopment agency is oral communications. This is when you have the opportunity to speak to either the redevelopment agency or the city council on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to do so, you may speak to one of these bodies, either of these bodies, you may do so at this point. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just approach the podium. If you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. You don't have to wait for your name to be called, just after the next person before you leaves, you can simply step up to the podium if you want to speak. But we ask that you line up by the flag, so you can be in a queue if you wanna speak on the deciding of. Let's have our first speaker. Yes, sir. All right, let's, okay. I should also add, at about two minutes, two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on, that'll give you the signal to start wrapping your comments up.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Bozard, I have a nonprofit called Ballin' for the Lord. What we do, we teach young people how to play basketball, and then we help them get into college, and we have a ninety-five percent success rate. Well, I wanna bring that to Landale, but it seems like Landale doesn't want me or want us, so I came tonight because I wanted to talk to you, because you in charge, and see if you could help us out, because what the problem is, is getting gym. So, that's been our problem, but other than that, we're gonna do what we do, and I'm gonna help kids wherever I can find them, so that's what I do.
Okay, very good. What we'll do after everyone has an opportunity to speak, we'll provide some comments.
Okay, I have something for you.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you so much. That's our next speaker. Yes, sir.
My name is John Linuski.
Okay. So what you can do for everyone, just come up to the podium and then give your name. No, that's fine, that's fine. Thank you.
My name's John Linuski.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Do I just start?
Yes, sir.
I'm here as a concerned and distraught citizen, as a resident of the city of Landale. I reside in an apartment building, and Mr. Mayor Pauline Miles, we've actually contacted you and met you a few months ago. You came out to our unit and we kinda told you a little about what was going on. Good to see you again. We have lack of effective management, septic backup in our bathroom, water damage, possible mold, and no heating facility in our unit. City of Landale falls under the L.A. County Board of Health, and we've contacted them many, many times. They've come out to do an inspection, and no citation, nothing has ever taken place. One time, we had feces and septic backup in our bathtub, we cleaned it up, and they said that since it was cleaned up, they can't do anything about it. I find it kind of ironic that I have to maintain unhealthy conditions until the Board of Health arrives to check it out for themselves. I also told them that we had no heat, no working heating insulation in our building. They told me that since it was springtime, I should call back when it's cold. I was amazed. Septic backup kept happening, contacted the Board of Health, no response. We complained again to the apartment manager about the lack of heat. They provided us a space heater, and our lawyer has assured us that this is an illegal solution. This is a specialty. Finally, about a month ago, about a month after we met with you, Mr. Pauline Miles, it happened again, septic backup again. Called the inspector to come out and look and told him about the heat. We didn't have the septic at the time, we had to clean it up, and he basically said that the space heater was good enough, and actually, our lawyer read the code directly to the inspector, who said, "I don't know the law, I just came to do a temperature reading." So, once again, I was amazed, and it's worth noting, too, that it's not the only time any of the tenants have ever contacted the Board of Health. They've come out numerous times and never cited anything, and to be honest with you, I'm just not quite sure what to do. I feel like this is a failure of a government organization that's set up to protect tenants from these exact things. Again, I've contacted a lawyer and we're in talks with that, and again, I'm just not quite sure what to do, because I feel like there are no options, but I think that's everything, and thank you, council, for listening to my transgressions. I appreciate that.
Absolutely, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Poalani Wong. Under California Civil Code Section one-nine-four-one-point-one, a building is considered substandard and therefore not livable if it lacks adequate heating facilities. The heating system must be maintained in good working condition by the landlord. How long can a landlord leave you without heating? Twenty-four hours. Under Section eleven of the Landlord and Tenant Act nineteen eighty-five, you have the right to expect your landlord to carry out repairs in a reasonable time. If it's an emergency repair, as you've got no heating or hot water, your landlord should fix this in twenty-four hours. I have lived here since May twenty-twenty. That winter, I reached out to AMC Management to ask about the heating in my unit. In response, I was given a plug-in space heater that heats up one section of my apartment. I cannot plug it in directly to the wall, because that outlet does not work. Instead, I plug my heater in an extension cord and am forced to sleep through the night in hopes it won't catch fire. Other times, I turn it off, because this fear does creep in, which I'm forced to bundle up in a fifty-to-sixty-degree home. I am here because the health inspection department has failed my apartments here at Casa Galleria four-five-four-six, West one-seventy-third Street, Landale, California nine-zero-two-six-zero. The inspector came on November thirtieth and claimed he could not cite my apartment because I was not given, I was given a space heater and have heat. He claimed that he couldn't cite the unit above me, because that neighbor bought his own heater and now has heat. I am furious, because why do we have people in place who don't know the law and how to cite these landlords accordingly? I found a routine inspection back on August twenty-fifth this year that has the comfort heat section, and when looking at it, it was not marked at all. There's three marks as options: inoperable, unapproved, and missing. And guess what? The inspector marked nothing. They have failed to ticket my landlord then in August and again in November. They have failed to keep us warm this winter, and I am here asking for help and to be the voice for my fellow neighbors, which is eighteen units in my apartment here at Casa Galleria Apartments in Landale. They currently have a for-lease sign up in my apartment as well, which means that as of right now, according to my lawyer, they're okay, as long as they don't put anybody in those units, but the moment they do put those people in those units, they are in, then violation. I am here asking for help, because I am losing hope and faith in our government and our health department overall. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, everyone. I hope I'm here, up here at the right time. My name is Taysha Batres. I've been a resident of Landale for maybe the last six years now or so. I'm here with my mother-in-law, who has been a resident here for the last twenty years, and my concern is with the parking recreations program that we're considering getting rid of the agreement with.
That's on the agenda?
Yeah, why don't we do this, since that is on the agenda, we would love to have your comments on that. That's gonna be one of these items on the agenda concerning the parks and recs, whether or not we're gonna relinquish any of the parks. We'd love to have your comments on that. Can you hold that for me?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. All right. Who else is willing to speak to this body on any items that's not on the agenda for either the Landale City Council or the redevelopment successor agency? Okay, seeing we will close public comments, and we'll bring it up to the dials for any comments, if there are any from the council, let's hear from Councilman Pat Kearney.
I wanna thank everyone that spoke tonight. Thank you for your comments. I'm gonna ask the city manager, what can we do to help these residents with their, because I ran the same situation, I had, unless I did it on my house, and my head wasn't working, they told me to buy a space heater, and I went through the ceiling. And you don't tell me this four-bedroom, two-bath house to get a space heater, but is there any way we can help these people?
I mean, we can check, thank you, Mayor and council, we could have Building and Safety and Code Enforcement go out there and take a look and see if there's any violations zoning or building. Just for point of clarification, we don't have our own health department, so it's the outside county of Los Angeles, but we can certainly go out and check through Building and Code Enforcement and doing inspections.
Would that carry any?
Miss Chavez and Mr. Reyes after the meeting and get their information, and then we can have Code go out there and take a look.
And that would carry some weight to report to the health department, because I know I dealt with the department all my life, and they are worth the salt of blow to hell, to be honest with you.
Well, we don't enforce the health per se, but we enforce the building.
With our inspection, we pass it on to the health department, would that motivate them to help these residents?
Well, I would certainly say that our codes would be enforced, building, and we'd definitely, if there are any violations that are identified out there, then we would, for example, in the building code, you have to have heat. You don't have to have A.C., but you definitely have to have heat. So if the heat's not working, that would be citable, if that's what's going on out there. So, yeah, we definitely could have some leverage on the property.
Okay, thank you. I'll pass that on.
Councilwoman Suarez.
I would also like to thank everybody that has come out tonight, and for those of you that gave comments, just to piggyback off a little, I think retaining a lawyer is the first step that you would do with regards to that, and, you know, California is very tenant-friendly, so you would think that, you know, that would help your case a bit with what's going on, and then whatever staff can look into, and that's, I think, the best course of action with regards to that, in terms of first steps. So, continue, you know, we'll keep, city manager will let us know, you know, what's going on with that, because we definitely don't want that in our city, and we want residents to want to rent in Landale. And then with regards to ballin' for the Lord, I guess I would be curious if maybe we talked to you about what steps you have taken to reserve space and where you've reserved space with our, we have our community services director here as well, possibly talk to him. I'm not quite sure where you rented, you know, whether it's through us or what location, so curious to hear a little more about that and see, you know, if that's something and that is available as an option for you in order to get, because we always want our kids to have programs and extracurricular activities. With that, I'll pass it along.
Councilwoman Cuevas.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. City manager, when you go check the apartment building, do you check the complaining units or do you check the entire building?
We check the outside where we have access to. If the tenants allow us into the units, we can enter the units, you know, if they invite us in. Anything beyond that, if the owner, we'd ask them for cooperation. If they don't cooperate, then we'd have to get an inspector.
So if the owners or if the tenants approve of you going in or our staff to go in, they will go into the apartment?
Correct.
Okay. Could we make sure that everybody in that building allows us in, maybe in writing to the city manager, that way? And if Mike could look into helping the ballin' for the Lord and see what kind of documentation of what exactly they need, if we could help with that, that would be great. Besides that, that would be all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman.
First off, the gentleman with Ballin' for the Lord, I was going to say the same thing, try to get you and Mike together and see if something can be worked out. I'm interested to hearing also as far as if there's anything we can do to assist you. I just had one question. When you have sewage backup into your homes, did you by chance have photographs, and would photographs assist with anything, city manager?
Any information that we can use to do enforcement would be helpful from the residents, so Code Enforcement and Community Development will work with the tenants to get that information. I'm sure they must have some kind of pictures, they provide it. The public council, we can use this.
Please share those with the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I too wanna thank everyone for coming out tonight and those who provided comments. Ballin' for the Lord, yeah, I'm interested in finding out a little more about, where is it? About the program, so, yes, if you can share it with the staff, and then if we need to meet, that's fine as well, like to know a little bit more about the projects. Sound like a worthy project to me. John, thank you and your neighbors for coming out tonight and bringing this issue. We've heard the comments, and I do share those same comments, so rather repeating those comments, I wanna bring a point that I actually work in another city, my regular job, and they have a program to where landlords who are problem landlords, they have a fancy name for acronym, I can't think of the acronym now. They have, they have a number of code violations, they are required to, not only to correct those code violations, but to put a certain amount of monies into escrow to ensure that these violations are corrected, and they're put on like a list, right? So it's, I forget the acronym. So there's a list, so then we can tell if, you know, we have chronic, you know, issues with, longstanding issues with violations with certain apartments, and the money's placed in escrow until the violations are corrected. Not only is the money placed in escrow, but then, of course, over a period of time, their fines escalate and compound, so it's not just a matter of you placing the money in escrow and then it's chalked up as a price of doing business, right? The disincentive is not just the money placed in escrow, but also the fines that compounds, you know, as well. We're also looking to coordinate with the County Department of Health, because we realize, like you stated, that issues such as the, probably the septic tank, not really the heating, but let's say if you had mold issues or what have you, because someone did mention mold issues, if I'm not mistaken, when I came out to visit the guys, those are under the public health as well. So what we're looking to do is also, before you close those cases, although the mold is a county, you know, a county activity, to confer with the county to make sure that those were addressed before we closed our end, because the county, they're on their own separate, you know, whenever they get, you know, to get the project done, that's when they get it done. They may cite, they may not cite, or what have you, but we can follow up with the county to see if they have issued some type of remediation planned, and they've gotten it abated or what have you, before we close, you know, our code enforcement, you know, a matter, because what happens is, the code enforcement matter may be closed, but then you still have this mold that needs to be abated, and they know it's not a city function, so, you know, and the county may not do anything, you know, about it. This would give them the incentive, even if the county don't follow up with them, they 'll contact the county and say, "Hey, you gotta come take a look at this, inspect it," so you can close out this issue with the mold, so that the city can then close out their, the violations that's part of the building and safety issues. So I think we might need to do something like that, because I've heard these kind of stories. Fortunately, it's not rampant in Landale, but from time to time, I do hear these kind of stories, especially the mold, you know, and you're pretty much on your own, you know, if we can find a violation to hold until they get the mold situations resolved. If we can find a violation to hold until they get the mold situations resolved, not just in this case, but other cases, I think that would be a way of helping the residents. So if we can kind of take a look, a look at that, I would appreciate that.
Not a problem, Mayor.
Thank you. But I want to thank everyone for coming out and we'll do our best to get this resolved for you. But thank you for coming. Absolutely. And I think that's all I wanted to make comment about. We held the other one. Okay. So with that, we will close public comments for both the city council as well as the Redevelopment Successor Agency. And we are now at the consent calendar, item F. Items one through 10 on the consent calendar. What is the pleasure concerning?
Our motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made by Quavis that we approve the consent calendar and seconded by Mr. Pat Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none with the council, please vote on the consent calendar.
For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item, item 11 is a public hearing concerning an ordinance adopting the 2022 Building Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Residential, Green Building Standards, et cetera. At this time, I would take the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and Miles and city council members. The item before you tonight is our, the 2022 Building and Safety Code Updates. On November 7th, staff came before you and presented the, introduced the ordinance number 1193-22 regarding the Building and Safety Codes, updating Building Code, Electrical Code, Plumbing Code, Mechanical Code, Residential Code, California Green Building Standards and the existing Building Code. Staff is coming here before you as with the second reading and second public hearing and recommends to acknowledge that the project is categorically exempt from CEQA pursuant to 15061B and adopt ordinance 1193-22, updating the building codes. And that concludes staff report and staff is available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions of the staff before we open the public hearing? Okay, with that, it is down 7:04. The public hearing is open. Are there any wishing to provide comments or testimony in this matter? Seeing none, that it is 7:04, the public hearing is hereby closed. Let's bring it up to the diocese for any discussion by the council.
If there's no discussion, I'll go to staff recommendation.
That's because I don't have my glasses on, so I have to look at you like.
I'll second that.
Okay. So the motion's been made by Kearney that we go with the staff recommendation and seconded by Quavis that we go with staff recommendation, which is to... It's actually three. It's actually the acknowledgement of the project is exempt as well as this, the adoption of the ordinance. Right?
Yes.
Okay, with that being the case, I'm going to ask the city manager to read the ordinance. City attorney, rather.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is ordinance number 1193-22. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Longdale, California, amending portions of Longdale Municipal Code Title 15 to update the uniform codes adopted by the city by reference by adopting the 2022 Los Angeles County Building Electrical, Mechanical, Plumbing, Residential and Existing Building Codes and the 2022 California Green Building Standards Code within Title 15 and adopting local amendments to these county codes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I want to ask the council to please vote on the motion.
For item number 11, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Item number 12 is also a public hearing. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Before us tonight, we have item number 12. And item number 12 is a consideration of ordinance number 1195-22. An ordinance for a code amendment that has been drafted before you. And this code amendment is for the accessory dwelling units, which is consistent with the state of California SB 897 and AB 2221. Before you, we have three recommendations. First recommendation is to conduct a public hearing. The second one is a determination to exempt the following item. And then the third is to introduce the ordinance to the public. And this ordinance number is drafted as part of your staff report, which is ordinance number 1195-22. And with that, staff conclude, that concludes my presentation and I'm open for questions and comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of the staff? Yes, ma'am.
I do have one question and it's under the section of staff review. So it's still within the, I guess, the summary. And so it's talking about the stream, so staff has reviewed Assembly Bill 221 and Senate Bill 897 and has repaired an ordinance which will establish streamlined procedures and development standards, which are... And then there's one section I just wanted clarification on. Requires a permitting agency in return, to return in writing a full set of comments to the applicant with a list of items that are defective or deficient and a description of how the application can be remedied by the applicant. Are you talking about like a review of the whole house and then you got to fix all these before the accessory unit can be done? Or what's wrong with the application? These are things that are, need to be updated before, you know, we can, before you can build the accessory dwelling?
If I may, thank you for asking the question. That statement requires a permitting agency, which is the city of Longdale staff. As part of the submit of an application, in this case, a site plan review application, staff is obligated and required as part of the legislation that has been brought before California jurisdictions is to provide a detailed descriptive remedy in sort of how to curate the issue or the item when we have an application or someone from the public proposing an ADU or junior ADU. And staff duty and due diligence is to make sure that we address the shortfalls or where the proposed project is deficient to meet those requirements and has to be clearly written in a letter, which we do provide currently as part of our review process for an applicant.
Okay, so it'd be related to, hey, like this, say you want to have it attached to the house, you know, this, your foundation or something is going to be a problem or something of that nature. Or I guess I'm trying to understand, like, if someone has, you know, a violation on their fence, is that going to be called out in relation to the project?
In reference to foundation, that's a separate matter. And in terms of the streamlined process of an ADU, that's in the building and safety process in terms of structural component. In terms of the land use component, which planning department reviews, that's the land use issues. For example, the front yard setback, side yard setback, lot coverage, just to name a few in terms of the proposed applicant's project, such as an ADU. And keep in mind, an ADU may be within the residence, may be detached or attached to the primary residence. So there's multiple variables in there in terms of the type of ADU project or junior ADU. But to keep it simplistic in a sense is if, let's say, for example, junior ADU maximum allowed within single-family residence, it's 500 square feet. Let's say, for example, someone is proposing a bit more than that, beyond the 500 square feet, that's something that we would then itemize as part of the correction letter that is given back to the applicant.
Okay, so it's just related to the specifics of the ADU and making sure it complies?
Yes, council member.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor. I was going to clarify, so just so we're clear, we process the ADU separately from the primary units under state law. So we wouldn't be able to hold them up for the fence because that's related to the primary unit. We only hold their feet to the fire on the ADU and we run those separately. I know the council's received complaints about two separate applications. That's why we do two separate applications. So they don't have, so we can't hold up their ADU because we have to process it efficiently. And this is just a rework of that ordinance. And we have, some departments, not ours, I have to say that, they'll put one-liners in there and say, you missed this information. So the state no longer allows us to do that. We have to be very, we have to clarify those corrections and tell them how to remedy those corrections so they're not submitting over and over and over again.
And may I add something as well? I just wanted to clarify that the corrections that we're giving to the applicant has nothing to do with code enforcement. It's just basically with the standards that are required by our ADU ordinance to be met and that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to say you pretty much summarized it pretty succinctly so that it prevents, that's why it's a streamlining of process and it just prevents a help to alleviate the going back and forth. Because we've seen in some cases where it may be clear to the staffer what needs to be hap, what needs to happen, but they may not necessarily spell it out, you know, for the applicant. So then it leaves the applicant to be on his or her own, figuring out, okay, I know it's, there's some defects or default, but I'm not exactly sure what I need to do to fix it or what have you. This would require that it be spelled out, that they how to remedy, so that it won't be a lot of back and forth and that the process will be streamlined. So this is probably from, adopted from state, the state requirements, this provision.
If I may. Yes, you are correct. That's part of the viewed bills that is being, were enacted and approved within this year. And that is something that, in essence, we're in compliance and it's part of the draft ordinance that we have before you tonight. And it's part of the streamlining and emphasizing again how to remedy that in a letter format so that the applicant understands. And of course, with that is the communication part that we pass along with the applicant.
I think this should be good policy for all the developments without going overboard and acting as the consultant, you know, for, you know, the applicant. But spelling out, you know, exactly what needs to be done or what have you. And I know we do that, you know, but to make sure that it's, you know, a practice, I think that's a good provision. So I'm happy with this provision in here. Okay, is there anything else from the staff you want to clarify, any questions before we open the public hearing? Okay, it's going to go fast. It may not go fast. It might take an hour. This one might take an hour. Okay, it's now 7:13, 7:14. The public hearing is now open. Are there anyone wish to testify or to provide comments into this matter? You can do so at this time. Seeing none, it is still 7:14 and the public hearing is, I'm sorry. Did you want to provide some comments? Okay, let me officially, the public hearing is officially reopened at 7:14. Please come to the podium, sir.
Good evening. My first name is Syed. My last name is Ali. I'm a resident of 4750, 4752 West 170th Street, Longdale, California. And I've been there, I'm an owner of this property since almost 20 years now. I bought the property with the existing ADU. And then about a year and a half, I started to get the permit on it. And that has been in process since then. And we get a lot of help from Ms. Jared, but then the planning section keeps going back and forth, back and forth with the plan checks. And I've had this thing going on since one, year and a half.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to have you to narrow it down to this exact ordinance. Now, we can talk about your specific issue outside of this, but this is for this particular ordinance, the provision of this particular ordinance.
Yeah, fantastic. All right, this is what I want to know. You see, if there is any corrections to be made, like you said, we got to, we got to narrow it down and so we understand what the corrections are and not to go, being going back and forth. That is what is taking time. It's not only taking time, it's costing me a lot of money and which goes further and on. So that's all I'm looking for. If you could please help me out with, and then we could expedite that and have the renters who are homeless to rent the property in Longdale.
That is part of this ordinance. Thank you. Thank you for those comments. Anyone else like to provide any comments? Okay, with that, it's 7:16, the public hearing is closed. Bring it up to the diocese for any comments from the council.
Now I have an additional question is what happens to applicants that, are they just going to be, is it going to start the timeframe ticking on getting those approved within the 60-day period? So how does that work with current applicants that maybe it's, has been longer than that?
The councilwoman Suarez. So the 60-day period is for the planning approval, which means that if it, once it gets approved by planning and then it goes to building and safety, if they have, they get corrections, it just, the, they would have to work because it's a building and safety matter. So all these issues have to be addressed. Most of the ADUs that are existing, they have to meet the Building and Safety Code. They have to bring it up to code. So if the plants are deficient, they would have to meet in order for them to live in a safe residence as we're approving a new residence. But for the 60-day tri, the 60-day time period, once you get comments the first time, planning gives comments, then it starts the clock again.
Mr. Mayor, to answer the question, answer the question. Yes, we work with applicants and we will try to move them through the planning and building regardless of what the law says. We will efficiently move them through. I think that's the question you had and that's what we will strive through. So now, just so what Jared pointed out, some of these ADUs are illegal conversions. So a garage, as everyone knows, the detached garages in Longdale are not habitable. So sometimes, not saying that's the case in this gentleman's, but sometimes it takes a little bit more building and safety review because they have to make it up to habitable purposes. The slab, sometimes the walls, there's not insulation, electrical, so it takes a little bit longer. But we will, we do work with applicants to process them fast on the planning side as well as the building and safety side.
Yes, ma'am.
The building and safety portion, we know that 60 days is planning. But is there a time limit for a building and safety or could we also say 60 days?
There's not a time. There's not a time limit. We asked for a 10-day turnaround on the first plan check. The county has backed up Los Angeles due to COVID and they, most of their employees are still working from home, half and half. And so they are backed up, I think it's three weeks right now. But we asked for a 10-day turnaround on plan check. Sometimes it takes longer. Sometimes there's problems, not saying that's the case with this gentleman, but their architects don't meet the building and safety codes and they don't address all the issues of whatever they're working on. So we do strive, when folks come in and complain and we see them lagging, they keep track, building and safety, keep track of the law weekly and they're trying to get these folks turned around in a couple of weeks.
So building and safety is a county, it's not?
It's contracted, but they work for the city of Longdale. So, and Jared oversees that and ensures that we process them efficiently.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd just like to add one more thing to that. We are working from Community Development Planning Department, we are trying to get people through as quick as possible. So because we are aware of the backup that they have in the building and safety side, so at least we're trying to get them through planning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, what is the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Our motion to approve ordinance number 1195-22 to amend certain sections in Title 17 of the Longdale Municipal Code.
And I'll second it.
Yes, and also to determine that the ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Control.
Yes.
Act. Great. So the motion's been made by Quavis and seconded by Suarez. Are there any discussion on the motion? Let's see, is there anything we need to read, Mr. Attorney? There's nothing to read, right?
No, sir. We'll do the reading at the next meeting and it's actually already been read by others tonight. So we're all good.
Okay, with the council, please vote.
For item number 12, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item, item 13, recommendation of increasing the bail amount for the use and possession of illegal fireworks in approving said resolution. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening. The item for you is the recommendation of an increase to the bail amounts for the use and possession of illegal fireworks. Each year for the past two years now, the city has implemented the Illegal Fireworks Suppression Detail at great cost and great use of resources by city and deputies, city staff and deputies. In spite of the success of the plan and we've written a large number... In spite of the success of the plan, and we've written a large number of sites, the plan does cost a lot of money, and we are still getting complaints from residents and from business owners about illegal fireworks. For that reason, we are recommending that we increase the first offense of illegal firework possession or use to twenty-five hundred dollars, and a second violation would be five thousand dollars for the second offense of illegal firework possession and use. At this time, I can answer any questions you have.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions? Yes, ma'am.
I do have a question, and apologies if I can't remember this piece of information, but I feel like it's been asked before. So how much have we each year actually been able to get in terms of fines?
The first year of the plan, we had an eight week plan. It resulted in about twenty citations issued that year, but only about two in the first six weeks. So for the second year's plan, we shortened it to just a two week period. It still costs about the same amount of money, because the last week of the plan, we hire on extra deputies. So both years, it cost about thirty thousand dollars. This year, we wrote about forty tickets, so resulted in cash positive of about forty thousand dollars on citations. But again, it's, we are still hearing complaints from residents and from business owners, and from residents trying to clean up the mess the next day. So there's a, a large amount of output and resources beyond just the noise and just the cost of deputies. So for that reason, we're looking to increase the fees.
But, but how much have we actually, how many people have actually paid the fines?
It is, people are still challenging them, so we actually had to dismiss a few tickets, because we didn't win the challenges. Others are still waiting to be heard, so I don't have a hard number, but we have about half of the ones we wrote have already been upheld. So now the people can make payment plans, things like that, so we haven't collected all the funding for them yet, but, and we do still have a number of hearings for people who've gotten fireworks citations from this year that haven't had their hearing dates yet.
So about half have been successful.
About half so far, yeah.
Okay, and then out of that half, we still need to come up with the plans for repayment, for payment from those individuals.
Yeah, well, they would have to, they would, they wouldn't set it up through the city, they would set it up through our, our, our vendor that does the servicing for the citations. But about sixty tickets have been written in the two years.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Mayor and council, we did try for the, the city attorney's office, the head of ICE, though. We can't go five thousand, five thousand, five thousand, so we had to ti- you know, tap it back a little bit, twenty-five hundred, and then five thousand after that, so, but, you know, that way it holds up with the judges down there in Superior Court.
Very good. Any other questions? Okay. You have a speaker? Yeah. Okay. It's now seven twenty-four. The public hearing is hereby open. Are there any wishing to testify? May do so at this time. Thank you, sir.
Good evening. Tonight, the council is set to raise administrative citation fees on the illegal use of fireworks. Increased fines are no deterrent to criminals who profit from the selling of illegal fireworks. Unless the city takes measures to locate the stashes of explosives within the city, and then follows through with enforcement, little has changed since the day I first came here a decade ago to request a resolution. I presented members of this council with the statistics on the carcinogens expelled by legal and illegal fireworks, and little has changed. I presented photos of the physical damage caused when fireworks explode and, and take a hand or eye, and nobody flinched. Residents doing research brought forth the use of administrative citations by other cities, at least someone listened and took credit for the idea. Another idea is requirement of permits. Lee Summit, Missouri, and Guthrie, Oklahoma are cities that require permits for residential fireworks discharge, and this is a process Lawndale should implement. Anyone igniting fireworks of any kind in the city of Lawndale that puts neighbors and property at risk should be required to comply with required permit similar to yard and garage sales. A required permit will identify permit holders and a location, making it easier for enforcement to issue a citation when there's a large gathering using illegal fireworks. And I gave the assistant to the city clerk information on those two cities' programs. We are told that ninety, seventy-eight thousand was spent on two thousand twenty-two enforcement. Unfortunately, despite numerous calls, we never saw one vehicle respond, and there was no decrease in the barrage of illegal fireworks in my area. Today's staff report indicates there were seventy overtime hours, seventy overtime hours and forty citations. This would average to a citation every one point seven five hours, obviously not the most effective results. Take some of the money and pay residents to report criminals hoarding illegal fireworks before they blow up the neighborhood. The city of Richmond offers a reward of twenty-five hundred dollars, and that may prove more effective than hiking the fee that was not much of a deterrent in the last two years. Possession over, over one hundred and one pounds of illegal fireworks is what becomes a felony, and we've all seen in South Los Angeles, the result of that exploding, exploding in the neighborhood. Whether the fines are one thousand or twenty-five hundred, the city needs to post more signs to alert the public of the penalties for illegal fireworks use. Along with more metal street signs, there should be more banners and the effective use of social media. Landlords should be notified of the fines and their liabilities should their tenants blast up illegal fireworks on their property. Lawndale should adhere to its noise ordinance and stop all fireworks at ten PM. This will aid enforcement by preventing the use of legal fireworks for the cover of the illegal.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for those comments. Are there any others wishing to provide comments? Seeing none, it is now seven twenty-seven. The public hearing is closed. Bring to the diocese for any comments from any of the council members.
I just have.
Hoffman Gorman.
I just have one comment, and that is, back to your last comment. If I had my way, every single one of them would be fined five thousand dollars.
Very good. Yes, ma'am.
Michael, how many, do you know how many signs we currently have on, on the streets?
Street signs?
Street signs?
If, if Mr. Abrams is referring to the metal signs that are posted up on trees, I'm not sure. I have to get that information from Public Works. Every year, we do put up the street banners, both for north and south facing.
The banners don't work, because if you're driving on Inglwood or on Prairie, you don't see the banners. Could we get a cost of how much the more street signs will be, and also how many we have? We might need to put more street signs.
Sure.
In, in the, the areas where we've been having issues, especially like one forty-seventh and Mansell, by Lucille Smith, there's a lot of activity going on there.
Yes, I can get the totals for you.
Thank you.
Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance one one nine four two two, to increase the penalties for violations of chapter eight point one two of the Lawndale Municipal Code.
Okay. And just before someone seconded, just a point of information, we're gonna need two motions and two separate votes. So the motion's been made that we adopt the ordinance eleven ninety, ninety-four, twenty-two. So the motion's been made by Hoffman Gorman and seconded by Kearney, Mr. Pat Kearney. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
Okay, for the first part of the motion on item number thirteen, it passes unanimously for the increased fines.
Thank you, madam. Now, to perfect it, we would need a motion to adopt on resolutions CC dash twenty-two, twelve, dash zero fifty-three. So moved. So the motion's been made by Councilmember Pat Kearney.
Seconded.
Seconded by Hoffman Gorman. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, with the council, please vote.
Okay, for item number thirteen, the second motion, it also passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're now on item fourteen under administrations. Item number fourteen is regarding the community recreation programs agreement with the Lawndale Elementary School District. Let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. This evening, staff is requesting your review and consideration of the three use, joint use agreements between the city of Lawndale and Lawndale Elementary School District, or LESD. In June of two thousand twenty, the city initiated the process to terminate its agreements to use the three recreational park areas at Jane Adams Middle School, Roger Anderson Middle School, and William Green Elementary, which would have ended on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. However, in efforts to continue its partnership with the city, and LESD approved a letter agreement in June of two thousand twenty-one, delaying the termination of the agreement to allow the parties time to negotiate new mutually acceptable agreements that would allow the city to maintain its use of the recreational park areas and allow LESD to share in the cost to complete major improvements that are needed to continue to operate the recreational programs at the three park locations. This letter agreement is, is expected to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. On June seventh, the city initiated discussions with LESD. The city and LESD met virtually on June seventh, June twenty-ninth, and August twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two. During the meetings, the city made good, good faith efforts to discuss the estimated one point five to three million dollar improvements that are needed at the three park locations, and attempted to seek a discussion or decision from LESD as to their willingness or interest in sharing the cost. At this point, staff has not received a response from LESD either way regarding the park use agreements or any of the information provided to them. At this juncture, staff is bringing this item before you for your discussion and seeking direction as to how to proceed. Since communications between the city and LESD has ceased, staff is recommending that City Council either authorize the city manager to execute a letter to advance the termination of the three park use agreements, or direct staff to continue to attempt to engage in discussions with the Lawndale Elementary School District, or do nothing and allow the agreements to expire on its own accord on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. Staff is available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for that staff report. Anyone want to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Yes, because I know we reached out and several times, is what I was told, and all we heard is crickets chirping at night in the school district. I know the past twelve years I've been on council, they kept saying they have no money. During the candidates forum, the, the car was let out of the bag that they had over seventeen million dollars. But come to find out, they even have more than that, and I believe, Rock, can direct me on how much they have?
Yeah, um, thank you. Based on their, you know, most recent financial that I found online, the June thirty, twenty-one, the general, their general fund has about forty-two million.
Forty-two million, they have no money. And then also, as I say, BD, it was directed, I, I listened to it, that one of the assistant superintendents got a, a large raise in their salary, too. So if they have no money to pay anything, but they have over forty million dollars in cash and bonds, or whatever you use, they have the money to share the cost on this. I'm not forgiving the parks back, but I'm, I'm tired of the city of Lawndale being a stepchild and paying for everything, and they reap the benefits. That's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Before we discuss, shouldn't we hear the public comments before we start?
Um, either way, is that, is that the conclusion of your report?
Yes, I'm just available to answer any questions.
I know the school district might wanna, you guys want to provide any public comment? Well, not public comment, but any comment from the school district? You don't have to, I'm just, you know, putting the offer out there. Okay, great. So, yeah, why don't we do that then, if anyone wants to speak on this item?
Janet Laney did.
Can do so at this time. And I did have it down there, but thanks for reminding me. Welcome back.
So I just have a few points to make. Uh, I'm a new mom. My son is twenty-one months, actually, now, as of the second. And, yeah, and we love that park. I never really went to the park before then, but once I had him, it became very apparent what a safe space it was, not only for him, but for me. It was one of the first places I was able to take him to and be comfortable, you know, as a new mom, taking him out in public and feeling like, okay, cool, you know, the home is right there if we needed to go. If he had a tantrum, or, you know, needed a diaper change, or food, or nap time, or whatever. It was easy to just, to be right there. We live on One Seventieth, so we're literally behind the school. I can peek out the window if my mother-in-law's there with him. I can't see them, see them, but I can know that they're there and they're safe, you know? So that is very important to me. It's a familiar space for him. I know one day we were going out, and we were going to the car, he wanted to walk instead, so I said, okay, we'll walk then. And he grabbed his scooter, he took the lead, and I just followed him, and he went to the park. He led me there, you know, so that was heartwarming for me to know that that park is right there. He goes there all the time, has been going there all the time, and he knew the way, you know? Important. Um, I think I can speak for any parent in here, and any parent in our community who goes there. He is not in school yet or daycare, but it's a safe place for him to learn socialization with other kids who are his age, and that's important. I don't want to have to go to Redondo, or Manhattan, or Hermosa, or any other city when there's a park behind my house that we can go to. Lawndale's a pretty diverse city. I appreciate that. Representation matters in all of our families, and I think we have a nice, diverse group of kids who go to that park, and that's important for him. I come from a community where, sorry, I'm nervous. I come from a community where we didn't have a local park, you know? So for him to even grow up and see that is super important. It's just a park, right? It's just a park, and it's, it's a school park, but it's a safe space for him. It's a safe space for me. We're close to home. I feel safe that my mother-in-law can walk around there at any time of day or night. They're close. You know, she doesn't have to cross too many streets. People run stop signs around there all the time. So that's important, and, um, yeah.
Your time has expired.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, those are my main points.
Thank you for those, those comments.
Oh, the red light. Thank you.
Thank, thank, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Virginia Castro, and I'm the very proud superintendent of the Lawndale Elementary School District. Thank you so much for, for inviting us to speak. We weren't planning on speaking, we just knew that we were on the agenda, and happy to be here. I think that we need to do more of this, each other share time and presence at, at our meetings. But I just wanted to say, there are some misstatements that, that were spoken, and I just want to clarify those, if I may. The dollars that Councilmember Kearney mentioned, those are allocated funds to educate our students, and they are committed funds for specific purposes, so we don't get to spend funds at our whim. The government, the federal government, the state government, and our Board of Trustees dictate how, how and how, how and when we, we allocate funds to students. Mr. Moore and I have had two conversations. Our last conversation, we did request several information, several items of information from the city, and he let us know that those would be returned to us. We haven't heard from him to date. So I, I would welcome further conversations. I think that it's a win-win. I did clarify to Mr. Moore, I think he was very confused about the language in our contracts. He kept referring to it as a lease. It's not a lease. The city doesn't pay for the use of our green space. We give it, we give it to the city to use for our children and our community. It was great to hear the mom speak about how her son enjoys the use of our lands. And in return, we do ask for maintenance on the land, and that's the only agreement. So there's not an exchange of funds, so I, I corrected Mr. Moore, because a lease is a legal term, and I just wanted to make sure that, that we clarified that language before we spoke further. But on behalf of the district, we welcome the continued partnership with the city, and, and if the city wishes to engage us in conversation, we are more than willing to provide space, green space, places where our kids can play and explore nature and have activities, so that's all I had to say. And again, Mayor Pullen Miles, I was not prepared to speak, so if you have any questions for me, I would appreciate a call from, from any of the council members to continue the conversation, but thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for providing those comments. Yes, ma'am.
Dear Mayor Pullen Miles and members of the Lawndale City Council, my name is Sandra Suarez. I live at four zero one five, West One Forty-Ninth Street, Lawndale. I am not in favor of the city ending. I am not in favor of the city ending its contract with the Longdale Elementary School District in maintaining the school parks for Rogers, Adams, and Green. I live closest to the Rogers Park. The fact is, people in the nearby neighborhood of these parks will and continue to use that open space if it's there for them. Right now, land in our community for people and families to enjoy is scarce, and unless it's going to bankrupt our city right now, then I say keep not one or two, but all three of the parks. If you don't, and our residents were not aware of this, it should come back to bite you, and I don't really recall any type of survey or notice that went out to the community or something as important, something as important as this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Karen Myler. I live on Avis, I live near Rogers. I came to this city around 35 years ago, and the reason, one of the reasons why I bought my home in this city was because of the parks right there on top of the schools. That I saw, they're like, all the parks were on the schools, and I was like, that was so cool. I told my husband, that was so cool, you know, that there's a park right there, you know? Because sometimes people get so involved with the, if my kid can do all the ABCs, and if my kid can have, you know, all these technical things, but they don't get involved in that social activity that comes along with playing at the park. You know, that's why some of our kids are so obese, because we don't do this. But this school has that park right there, and my kids, they play peanut ball, you know? Then they go to the Easter egg hunts there. They have all those memories, and then I got grandkids, and it's cool to take them there. And the parks are not close, if I'm at Rogers, and you just have one park, it's not close, it's not for walking distance, you know? Right now, it's walking distance, and that's cool. And so it would just really be nice if we just kept it like that for the families that, you know, who've been here a long time and love it, and would love our generations to still have that same thing. Of, this is a nice city, it's really a cool city, and we should try and keep the things that we can keep, we should keep the things we can. You know, that's all. Thank you, guys. Hope you had a good Thanksgiving, okay?
Thank you as well. Okay, I think that's in the public comments, so if you'd like to ask some...
Me?
No, no, I thought, Councilman Suarez.
I did actually have some questions, because I'm a big proponent of looking at what the, what other cities do, what other school districts do. So, and I actually did take a look at one in particular, for example, just to make sure, you know, for me, I know this isn't a lease, but usually, an agreement consists of, you know, one party providing something, and the other in exchange providing something else, just a basic agreement. So I was looking at other cities, for example, Manhattan Beach Unified District with the city of Manhattan Beach, they actually pay 550,000 annually and pay for maintenance. City of, so City of Paramount and Paramount Unified School District, city, so residents can use the park, and the city actually maintains the park. So, and there's a few others that I looked up. So it looks like it's a common agreement. It's not every district and city that has that agreement, but I think it's a pretty common one. And so for me, I guess just, I just think that the use of the open space that we provide to our residents far outweighs the costs that we're looking at in terms of upgrades that might be upcoming. The other thing I did want to ask is, we have lumped amounts, but it's, I want to, would like to understand these amounts that we're looking at. Do these have to be done in a year, or are these something that can be done over the course of a decade and whatnot? You know, for example, your house, you fix your roof, and then it could be good for another 20 years, and if so, then, oh, okay, well, you divide the cost up of how much use you've gotten out of it. And the other thing that I think is important is, is we didn't even look and see how many residents use it. So I'm, I'm just a big proponent of keeping as much green space as possible, especially in our small city, and not eliminating any of the parks. We can continue, of course, the discussions with the school district, and I did actually want to read one thing from our general plan that I think is very important. This was adopted in 1990, and the report is under open spaces overview. The overall quality of life in a community is enhanced by the provision of open space and recreational opportunities. As Longdale's population continues to increase, the need for open space and recreational area increases as well. Use of available and accessible open space and recreational areas within the city boundaries is currently at capacity. Longdale's urbanized character leaves limited open space and recreational opportunities for the future. Therefore, the preservation enhancement, expansion, and improvement of open space and recreational areas becomes a priority issue in the city, and I think that is still very much relevant, if not more relevant to this day. So I'm just strongly a proponent of keeping them, continuing negotiations, but definitely not ending this use agreement.
Thank you for that. Yes, ma'am.
I would like to continue the talking to the school district. Also, I believe that our kids need the parks, so I'm not in favor of closing any of our parks. I would like to see a breakdown of how we came up with those numbers, and if it could be done within five years, 10 years. Also, we used to have a committee that met with school board. It was two council members and two school board members. So I would like to, for that committee to be brought back so we could sit down with the school district, and we could discuss and hopefully come up with a solution, but I want to keep all three parks open.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I think you just took the words right out of my mouth, and what my suggestion is, I believe that the school district representatives and the council representative and city representatives could sit down at a table and try to work something out that is in the best interest for both of us and the community. I'm fearful of us not having the park space. I might not be one that every day uses the park space, but I recognize many people in our community do use it for different purposes, both for physical and sometimes even mental therapy is to be out there in those spaces. So I recognize the importance of them, and I, too, want to keep all three of them intact, but I believe that we need to sit down across the table. If we're not communicating via Zoom, or, and things are getting lost in translation, let's sit down and give this a talk over to see where we can meet. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments, Madam Protem. So when I first was elected to the city council, one of the items that was brought to my attention that I observed, I should say, was the lack of parks that we had in our city. And so I thought it was important that we increase our open space and increase our parks, and that was one of the issues I actually ran on, increasing the parks. Since then, we have, we have increased by three parks, we have three city parks since then that we didn't have during that time, we're talking about 18 years now. So for me to reduce the amount of green space in parks would be counterintuitive to go from, to add three and then reduce it to three would be just counterintuitive when we didn't have enough parks then, and to, right now, we can always use more green space. And so to decrease that green space will really would be counterintuitive to, really would be at a less level than 18 years, even though it would be back to three parks. But those parks are much smaller, you know, except one park is a pretty nice-sized park, but the other, two parks are smaller, parks or what have you. So it would be kind of hard for me to support reducing the parks. Now, I would reiterate what I said a few months ago, last year, when this item came up concerning Anderson. I believe that that park is underutilized, there's not a lot of activity, and this was before COVID, notwithstanding COVID, this was before COVID, that that park is underutilized. And before COVID, notwithstanding COVID, I think I had been to that park all of maybe, maybe five times, when there was an event going on, or some type of organized, you know, maybe it was soccer or something going there. And that's because it was just underutilized, there was not a lot of activity going there. So I said at the time that I would like to see that park being utilized more so, because if we're paying for the maintenance and the upkeep of it, even though it's not a lease, but there's a cost involved that the community is paying for, essentially the parks, because we are paying for the maintenance, that park should be better utilized. And I know at the time, some entities complained that they didn't have access to the park, whether it was soccer, rugby, or what have you, didn't have access to the park. And I said, that shouldn't be the case, because we're paying for the parks. And so those parks should be, in particular, Anderson, should be utilized more so. And I hope that this would be the case going forth, and that we will make, and I know COVID got in the way, an assertive effort to recruit people if we need to, to entice them, induce them to actually use the park so that it's actually used by the community. So I want to keep those parks open. I do have a question, just so I can kind of grab my brain around it. I know we had a price of 1,500,000 to 3,000, to 3 million, and I guess these would be like capital upgrades or what have you. And I'm just thinking to myself, if we didn't have the parks, the three parks, obviously we wouldn't be spending, you know, the said, mentioned money, but in terms of lost opportunities, how would that, how would that square? It seems like to me, you know, we're talking about, was that 4,500,000 right over, I don't know what our next agreement will be, seems like a small amount in terms of opportunities for the community to utilize three parks. I mean, I know it gives us heartburn that we, that we are paying 100% of the maintenance, but if you look at it as to, like you was kind of mentioning, amortize it over whatever the period of disagreement would be, that's probably very little, you know, for the benefit, if you look, if you're talking about like a cost-benefit analysis, that our community will derive from the new agreement. If you just don't get too involved with just the numbers, and like, oh, that's four, you know, four and a half million dollars, you know? And I think that's the angle that I like to look at it, I want to look at it. I mean, although I would have, obviously, I've said this before, if the school district can put something on it, it doesn't have to be five, that was a joke. But if the, but if the city does have, the school district does have anything to contribute, then that would be greatly appreciated, but at the same time, I do see the value in terms of the cost-benefit, and that is definitely a benefit, although it is 4 million dollars. So that would be my comments on it. Yes, ma'am.
And I'm wondering if we could also look into if there's any grants, or any, anything that we could look into that might, and work with the school district to apply for, if it's a major capital improvement issue, or something of that nature. Look at alternatives of working together, finding resources, you know, if we can.
Yeah, because sometimes you're on the right track. The Los Angeles County Open Space District often have grants. Now, I'm not sure how, how readily available they are these days, but I know a few years back, they had a lot of grants for promoting green space, things of that nature, so I'm not sure what's available, but that's a good idea to look into sources. Matter of fact, one of our, if I'm not mistaken, one of our parks, we paid for through those funds. A lot of those funds was used, if I'm not mistaken, from that grant. But we'll continue to talk. We'll continue to talk. Yes, yes, sir.
You know, I, you know, I don't want to give up space up, I don't. Green space is recommended, not required by state law, is not required, is recommended. But you guys all live in this, I mean, you live in your world, I live in mine, that the city cannot keep dishing out half a million dollars a year, half a million dollars a year. Eventually, it's going to run dry. And if we decided, well, I don't think we're going to decide, to give these parks back to the school, they can use the same template we do. You could have your janitor engineers, your janitors, and not open the schools after school and close them at night, you'd have to hire a weekend staff to open them and close them, and you still have the green space, not costing us anything. It'd be back to you guys, and your green space would still be open. But I don't think the school district wants to do that. You still want to cash in on the cash cow until we run dry, and I'm totally against. I believe we should give the parks back and let them run the way we run it right now with no staff there. We open, we close it, and weekend we'll hire another staff person to do it. And Bernard said, in 1990, yeah, that's great, but we, like Robert said, we expanded two new parks, and we expanded a third park. And like I said, it's not, it's recommended, not required, but that's my own opinion.
And I have a counterargument. No, I'm just joking. I have something to add with regards to that, because back in 2018, the city hired a firm, we were looking at increasing the sales use tax, and they did a poll within that report. So there was three of us at the time that were on the council. And let me look at my notes, because it did a poll, and the poll specifically had the title, this was an outside firm that did it, protecting access to, no, 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 this was a different, yeah, protecting access to safe drinking water, funding public safety services and insur, no, no, that's not it. I wrote down the wrong one. I think I have it here somewhere. It basically asked what residents, what their priority issues of what they viewed as important for the city, and whether the city needed additional funding. And so for this one, there was one that particularly called out parks. So community priorities, maintaining neighborhood parks, I think it was, yeah, it's about 80% that said that they viewed that as extremely important or very important. So I do think that we do have newer parks, but the school parks are bigger, they have more acreage. And in that report in 1990 said that, at the time, we were deficient by 27 acres of open space, and that was, that was years back. And so currently, at this point, yeah, we added more, but there's also been an increase in population. The state is requiring to build more housing, which means more population, so I think that any green space that's available, we should continue to preserve, and on top of that, build more green space. So that's just my opinion.
I just have one question. What do we have to do to set up a meeting with the school district? Can we write them a letter? And I would like across-the-table-type meeting, not a Zoom, not something, just letter writing back and forth. I would like to sit across the table with our friends at the school district. How do we get this ball rolling?
So if it's, thanks, council, mayor and council, so I'll respond to a couple of things. The question first from the mayor pro tem. First of all, we can... First of all, we can set up a meeting, it'd have to be publicized, you know, a joint meeting with the council, the board of trustees. That's not a problem, if that's the direction of the council. So we can, we can set that up as soon as possible. We waited till after the election, the swearing in, probably in January to be the same. I just want to clarify what Ray Lett brought up. So this isn't a matter, there's actions here, I just want to clarify the council. The direction has been to work with the Longdale Elementary School District. We have been, we've done all we can to reach out to them. We've done everything, Ray Lett's been with me. We've been at every turn, been asking them. The simple question, which has not been answered and it cannot be answered today, and they won't answer. Do you want to be a partner with Longdale? I've asked them over and over and over. Do you want to be a partner with Longdale and share in the costs? I've asked the point blank in Zoom meetings, Ray Lett's asked it, we've asked it to them. We've sent them emails, every council member's gotten that email. We have been upfront with them, we've been asking for a partnership. I haven't gotten an answer back. All we, all we get back from them is more information. I have to send staff out of MOD and staff to go and do all these assessments. We don't have the, you know, it's not our property to do all these assessments. That property belongs to the Longdale Elementary School District, not the City of Longdale. We leased it, yes, she corrected me and I came back to the record and corrected it, as the council is aware. But again, we've asked them. Ms. Castro could stand up right here and answer the question, are they willing to be a partner of the City of Longdale? We've asked them and they haven't given us an answer. Staff have reached out many times to work with them, but we haven't gotten an answer. This isn't about giving away the parks, this is about getting in a partnership and working together as a team to make these parks better. But we haven't gotten an answer. We're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on breakdowns. We had a resident come in here, blame us for the wall. They want all new walls along the property around Anderson. There's a lot of requirements for maintaining these properties. And that's fine, as long as we can figure out a way to do it together collectively. But we haven't gotten an answer. I just wanted to be clear on the record, we've asked for an answer and we have got nothing, but give us more information, we can't give you an answer, just so we're clear.
Can we ask them either if they're prepared to this evening or at a meeting where we do meet, would they be willing to make, give us that answer so that we could move forward?
Yes, I think we can, we just haven't gotten back any information back from them.
That's why I would like to sit down face to face, not Zoom, not phone calls, face to face. And we could put everything on the table and have a final answer and from there proceed. But my point, parks should not be closed. We should have all six green spaces, three from the city and three school district parks. I'm still standing on that.
I think it's pretty clear in the council direction, that's where we're going. And that's not a problem, the issue is not getting an answer back from the school district on, are they willing to partner?
Well, hopefully, when we sit down face to face, we'll have the answer.
So council members, just, you know, my, my name is included on the staff report. So I want you to understand kind of legally where we are today, right? Two years ago, well, almost two years ago, in the spring of two thousand twenty-one, you directed us to enter into a letter agreement with the school district. City executed it, school district executed it. And it pushed the termination of your existing agreements out until this June thirtieth. So if no new agreement is reached, then on July first of two thousand twenty-three, there will be no agreement and the city will no longer be working with the school district on the parks. So I think what we need tonight, first of all, is the direction to continue discussions. And you've also given us some very specific and good direction on how you would like to see those discussions go. But then we all kind of need to understand, as Mr. Moore said, we need to get started in January. Because yourselves, Mr. Moore, Ms. Felton, school district staff, school district board will have to work out the broad strokes. And then the legal offices are going to have to crank through an actual agreement that can then come to you and get to the school district no later than June, certainly, if, if we want to keep the parks open. So it, it will take a devotion of time on everybody's part. And I know that you're all willing to do that and, and obviously, we hope the school district is as well. I believe from two thousand twenty-one, if their legal counsel hasn't changed, she and I got along quite well. So I think she and I can work through that part of it. But just as we go, please understand, it's, it's, you know, there, there is some urgency to this as we get into spring. And that's the legal advice, is that there's some urgency. Thank you all.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for that clarification. You know, I, I think that I don't have any problem with a, a meeting with the school district. But I want to be able to, when we meet, when I say we, whether it's the subcommittee or the committee as a whole, or whatever the, the format is. But when we meet, that there should be a certain expectation where you bring something, a proposal to the table of both parties as opposed to your meeting. And yeah, we're here in the discussion, we already know what the discussion is and what the issues or what have you. But the record show that we met, you know, what have you, right? So I would expect the school district to be able to come to the, to the, the meeting and say what they're, what they are willing to do or to give. And likewise, the city, saying what the city is willing to give or to do. As opposed to, you know, right now, you can just go to a meeting and if nothing happens, it's just, it just terminates automatically. You know, if nothing comes out of the meeting or if you come to the meeting and, oh, well, let me see, we got to give, the city needs to do a further investigation, or the, the, the school district needs further investigation. Meanwhile, the, the time don't stop, you know, you know, on, on the agreement because we got to go take a look at the parks again for, and it's going to take us another two weeks or a month. Or the school district have to make some type of assessment and it's going to take them another two weeks or three months. It doesn't, doesn't stop. So I hope we can use this time leading up to that meeting to have, because you can anticipate, both parties can anticipate what the other party is going to say and what they're going to be looking for or what have you, you know, before you come to the meeting. So we should be prepared with, with, they're willing to put on the table and what we're willing to put on the table to negotiate it as opposed to just coming to the meeting. Everyone knows I'm not the biggest fans of meetings, right? You know, certainly not to meet, just so the record to show that we met, you know, or what have you. So, but we need to bring something tangible, proposals onto the table on both parties. On part, otherwise, we're just, we already know that the, the council as a, not as a whole, but pretty much have expressed that we want to preserve this relationship and want to preserve having the parks available to the public. The issue is how do we get there? You know, do we go half? Do we go, you know, ten ninety, eight twenty, or what have you? You know, obviously, you know, I don't know what the, the magic math number is. But from our standpoint, I, I do agree that we, we are bearing a hundred percent, you know, of the cost. But you can also argument, argue that we're, we're getting a hundred percent of the benefit, you know, as well. But if our cost is equivalent to our benefits, then, then that, that's okay. But if we're paying more than what our benefit is, which I don't know, I don't know how you assess that, that, that analysis or what have you, then that's the portion that, that the school district should, should take up. And there might be certain activities that we may decide, okay, if this type of improvement needs to happen, this will be the percentage. But then there may be just a regular maintenance fee, a maintenance, a cost that the, that the city may incur a hundred percent. But if there's a capital improvement, like for instance, the wall with the drainage, something like that, we may agree that if something that of a capital nature happens, then we split the cost, whatever the math is. So it doesn't necessarily have to be, you know, ninety, ten for the, 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 the whole duration of the agreement, no matter what the, the maintenance, you know, is. It could be also based on certain types of maintenance or what have you. If we're cutting the grass, yeah, we should pay a hundred percent of that because we're using, we're using the grass, right? But if there's a, a major breakdown for, just because it's just regular wear and tear and it would have broke, it would have had a break anyway, no matter who was using it, no matter if it was even being used or not, then something like that might be a share cost. I'm just saying. So I think we should kind of look at those type of things.
That's why I wanted to break down those amount, to see how we came up with one point five or three million dollars. Is what, how do we get there? And is it capital expense or is it grass or whatever we have to do? If we could break that down, when we sit down with them, we could decide which way to go.
Well, for instance, like the wall, like, I don't feel comfortable paying a hundred percent of the wall because the wall issue, drainage issue, sound like that was an issue of, and I could be wrong. Sound like that might have been an issue of a design fault, how the system was designed. So then why should the, the city then, because now you're having problems with it because of how the drainage was designed, occur a hundred percent of the, of fixing it? Because even after our agreements, let's say we decide ten years from now, twenty years from now, that, okay, we have enough parks, we don't need to lease, we don't need to have a park agreement. Well, they're still going to, the, the school district still would benefit from that type of improvement, which we had no part in breaking, if you will, right? Because it was a design flaw, at least that's what I was, my analysis, it was a design flaw, something like that. But because we're partners, we might can go, you know, percentage on it. But that's all I have, I want to.
Mr. Mayor and Council, are you wanting to do a joint meeting with the, just so clarify, I know we were going to, most likely the council is moving for action C. So continue moving forward, working with the Longdale Elementary. But are you wanting to do a joint meeting or do they have the subcommittee?
I would like to see all of us here.
Joint meeting.
Okay.
And also just to clarify that, before this expires, say there's unsuccessful talks, you know, unlikely to happen, but, you know, say in the event that there are, this will still come back for us to make a final determination.
Oh, yes, always. Council makes all the final determinations. I think in the agreement, it does say I can do, the city manager is authorized to do the impasse, but I felt more comfortable bringing it to the council. It's better off to, something this big needs to go to the council.
Yeah, if they're willing to do a joint meeting, the board of trustee then, or not. Okay, so is that enough directions?
That's, the city attorney says that's good enough direction.
Okay. That'd be the order, all right. Okay, let's see, where are we on this agenda?
So our friends at the school district can expect the letter soon, I suspect.
Absolutely, thank you. Okay, the next item, let me see, where are we? Item fifteen, municipal election, general municipal election update.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council members, Yvette Hall, Assistant City Clerk. This report is, is to provide you with an update on the unofficial general municipal election results. On November eighth, two thousand twenty-two, the city conducted its general municipal election for the offices of mayor, one seat, city council member, two seats, and city clerk, one seat. As of November twenty-ninth, twenty, twenty-two, the unofficial results are as follows. For mayor, there were two candidates, Robert Pullen Miles and Warren Dale Jackson. Robert Pullen Miles received three thousand six hundred and seventy-one votes or eighty point eight, eight percent. Warren Dale Jackson received eight hundred and sixty-eight votes or nineteen point one two percent. For city council member, there were five candidates, Dan Reed, Samuel Cruz, Wanza Tolliver, Bernadette Lourdes Suarez, Pat Kearney. Dan Reed received nine hundred and eighty-eight votes or fourteen percent. Samuel Cruz received one thousand sixty-two votes or fifteen point zero five percent. Wanza Tolliver received eight hundred and forty-four votes or eleven point nine six percent. Bernadette Lourdes Suarez received two thousand five hundred and fifteen votes or thirty-five point sixty-four percent. Pat Kearney received one thousand six hundred and forty-seven votes or twenty-three point three four percent. For city clerk, there was one candidate, Erica Harbison. Erica Harbison received three thousand seven hundred and five votes or one hundred percent. The total ballots cast is five thousand ninety. On December fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the Los Angeles County Register Recorder County Clerk's office is scheduled to certify the election results and declare the election officially concluded. That concludes my report, I am happy to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you for that report, are there any questions on the report? Okay, see now, we will receive the report. Thank you. Next item.
I would just like to say congratulations to those that ran.
Oh, yeah, that is an order. Yeah, thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations, my condolences.
I look forward to working with all three of you for another two years.
I don't know if I can work with them another two years.
Okay, item number sixteen is recommendation to select Everbridge for citywide emergency notification systems.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. The item before each night is the recommendation to select Everbridge for the citywide emergency notification system. Currently, the City of Longdale has no emergency system by which to advise residents of an emergent event such as a manmade or a natural disaster. Well, it is part of the Area G Regional Emergency System and we are the only member of Area G that does not belong to Everbridge. The Everbridge system will allow the city and emergency personnel to send messages to the entire population of the city in the event of some manmade or natural born disaster. It will allow alerts across various devices, including cell phones, text messaging, landlines, emails, et cetera. And it can be done in twenty-nine different languages. The system will have one-time startup cost of roughly twenty thousand dollars, which will include training and program costs, but this price will drop to ten thousand sixty-six dollars every year after that. Additionally, this item has been already discussed and approved by the bridge, by the budget subcommittee. And at this time, staff recommends going with the Everbridge notification system. And I can answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Thank you for the report, yes, ma'am?
Is, would this be like a robocall system where we could use it for other things as well, or is it only emergency?
It, it can be used for other items, like I said, it can be used for targeted messaging. So in the event of a targeted event, a shooting, we could certainly send messages out to just that region. If there is a gas leak in one of our neighboring cities, but wind conditions are blowing it in certain regions like the south end of our community, we could just target the south end, so not everybody's out. I mean, there are also these privacy issues, so we want to make sure we don't send a mass alert to the entire community when we're alerting people that aren't really in any sort of danger. There is also two-way messaging in this system rather than free systems, which allow messaging, just blanketed robocall kind of things, but there's no way to respond to those. So this will allow our residents to say, yes, I'm fine, or yes, I need help.
But that's only emergencies, you're not announcing that there's going to be a fish fry.
You, you don't want to use it for that purpose because part of the things, if people are getting alerted daily, they're going to disconnect. And this is sort of an opt-in system, so we don't want people to be disinterested in being alerted because when there is a real emergency, we don't want.
Because then people start to ignore it when you get too many messages, okay.
And do we, are, do we, are we able to opt in or opt out of this?
Yes, yes.
We have to register?
Yes, in order to, so we do have access to a large number of residents' information for business licenses, dog licenses, things that they sign up through the city. So we could take that information, automatically transfer it to the system. We would also need to send out blanket messaging to, or the members of the community, asking them to come into the system. Anyhow, it would be opt-in, they would provide us what, which, whatever information they want to give us. If they want to give us a cell phone number, a landline and email, or just some portion of that, we would take all that information and we prioritize based on their wishes, how they would want to be messaged.
And how do we notify the residents? Do we, are we trying to, are we going to do a mailing or?
I spoke with, with one of the Everbridge representatives today. Basically, it would be for people that we don't already have information on, we would have to go seek out and get their information. And, and they could opt not to be in it. There are people who are concerned with the privacy that don't want to be messaged in any event. So we would just have to pass on those, but so it is, it is partially an opt-in.
Last question. If I rent my property, you probably don't have my renters' information. So are you sending the homeowners or how do you get?
Likely, we would need to send both. So we do have a listing of, of properties that are rented and not occupied and they're owned by people not in the city, so we provide some messages to both and ask them to be a part of it. Ideally, though, we would want the, the family living in the community to be the ones. Ideally, though, we would want the, the family living in the community to be the ones notified rather than someone who's living out of state, since they wouldn't necessarily need to, to be alerted, does an emergency alarm.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? So we would need a motion for this.
I'll make, I'll second.
Vice versa, that doesn't matter.
Okay, it sound like the motion was made by, uh, Councilman Pat Kearney. It's seconded by Councilman Suarez. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, would the council please vote?
For item number sixteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And I guess we should, we, I also should say, uh, congratulations to, um, city clerk.
No, it's okay, council, Mayor Protem Hoffman-Gorman's only interested in.
We look forward to working with you for another four years. Okay, next item, um, seventeen is request for additional funding for increase to contracts with Society for Prevention of Cruelty to Animals.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you again. Um, the item before you is a request for additional funding for an increase to the contract with S P C A, the Society for the Prevention, Prevention of Cruelty to Animals for Kenneling and Animal Care Services. Uh, for the past two decades, uh, the city has partnered with S P C A, uh, to do our animal care and kenneling services. They also handle, uh, um, basic vet services for us, including providing medicine, euthanization of animals, uh, and they also provide, um, uh, destruction of animals for deceased animals that we bring to them. Um, they made us aware a few months ago that their fees were going up. Um, after some negotiation, um, they had talked to us about raising it to ninety-six hundred per month. We talked them down to eighty-one hundred per month. They are willing to do this for this fiscal year. Uh, but there is, um, discussion that would, that will need to go to ninety-six hundred starting with the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. Uh, for now, staff is recommending that we accept this additional charge for now, which will last us until, uh, until July of twenty twenty-three, and then we'll have to revisit this. Uh, but at this time, this is still the least expensive option for us, even with this increase. Um, I have attached a, uh, estimate from L.A. County Services. They're the only agency currently that is willing to take on new, new clients. Um, we have spoke with other agencies that do animal care servicing, um, many of them are not able to, to handle additional cities. Uh, and as I said, the, the county who is willing to do it, it would be more expensive than the, the raised price with, uh, S P C A. So at this time, staff is recommending we stay with S P E C A, uh, with the new contract for an eighty-one hundred dollar a month fee. Uh, and we additionally would want to, uh, have additional charges to cover the four months that we've been operating at the old contract. Uh, and at this time, I can answer any questions.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the quote that the L.A. County gave you, the hundred and six thousand dollars, is that for the entire year?
Yes, that's for one year.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I'll second it.
Okay, so the motion's been made that, that we approve the additional funding by Quavis and seconded by Suarez, Soros. I think I'm saying that right. I'm a little tired today. Is there any discussion on the motion? See now, would the council please vote? Alright.
For item number seventeen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item is an amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three adopted operation budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. I'm Adam Sari, Inner and Public Works Director, City Engineer. I'll make it very short. Um, the item before you, um, request the city council to amend the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three adopted operating budget. Basically, it has two parts to it in this, in your staff report. One, need for additional budget in building equipment maintenance fund as well as the ground maintenance fund. Um, the first thirty-two thousand dollars and the second eighteen thousand. And these two items of the cost are attributed to unforeseen, unexpected, um, variety of different expenses uh, during the first quarter of the fiscal year, July, um, August, and September, which kind of depleted the budget um, for a total of fifty thousand. The second part of the staff report has, has to do with the housekeeping item and basically correcting the budget amount. Um, prior to the landscape contract that we currently have with Mary Poser, the budget was ninety-five thousand. The new one with Mary Poser is hundred and sixty-one thousand. So inadvertently, there was a mistake in the budget showing it as ninety-five thousand, and we were correcting that for the amount of sixty-six thousand. So the total fiscal impact is hundred and sixteen thousand, as shown on the second page in your staff report. Uh, I'll be happy to explain more or answer any questions at this time.
Okay, thank you for the staff report. Are there any questions? Of the report?
Sorry, on the landscaping, it went up sixty-six thousand dollars, but are they? Cause I still see the, the medium still dead plants here and there. Are they on top of that, or how, I mean, it increased sixty-six thousand dollars, and I'm, I'm seeing almost the same results as the previous company.
Well, a- actually, we're not increasing their contract. Uh, it, it's just that their contract was hundred and sixty-one thousand when it was approved by the city council, compared to the ninety-five thousand for the South Bay Company, which was previous landscape contract. With respect to your question, as far as staying on top of it, if they don't, I will keep him on top of it. And it's a, it's a process that they're going through repairing and, and all that along half way.
Thank you for that. Okay, what is the pleasure this body concerning? This item.
I'm making the motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion's been made by Kearney that we approve the amendment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three adopted budget, operating budget, and seconded by Quavis. Is there any discussion on the motion? See now, would the council please vote?
For item number eighteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, madam. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. Let's hear from the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, couple things. The general plan scoping meeting, Jared reminded me it would be on December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two at six thirty P M on the second floor of the community center. So if all of those are interested to provide input on the general plan update, Hawthorne Boulevard specific plan, they can participate at that meeting and, and submit comments and, and talk to Jared and staff out there and just, you know, express their concerns of how they want their city to look in the future. Um, the second thing, um, the youth parade, Mike wanted me to remind you, Mr. Estes from the Community Services Department, I sent you an email a couple weeks ago letting you know that Alondra Park, the northeast, the northwest corner will no longer be a lot, uh, it's undergoing retrofitting and some, um, improvements to the site related to stormwater. So, uh, the youth day parade will have to be rerouted. Um, and most likely, we'll have it come to the downtown area, since we don't have a place for it to stop. It was traditionally at Alondra Park, now we'll have to have it rerouted and come to downtown. Um, if you have any questions, please let me know, and Mike and I were gonna work together on ensuring that happens with the youth day parade. And then moving forward on the fireworks suppression, I was gonna put this out there, and this is like, uh, this is just almost like a competition for the sheriff's department for the July first, or July fourth, um, suppression day. I'm gonna take our eight thirty-two P C staff, and we're gonna go out, the civilian side of it, and we're gonna go out, and we're gonna cite two, and we'll see who gets more sites. So that's, that's a, uh, to the lieutenant and to the sergeant, we were putting that competition out there, uh, so when you guys are out doing your suppression, I got eight thirty-two, I'm eight thirty-two, Mike's eight thirty-two, so we're gonna go out, we'll help out the sheriffs on the civilian side. So, that's it.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait a minute. Wait a minute.
Of course, only if they're, they're shooting out fireworks, illegal, unpermitted.
I heard a challenge, but I, I didn't hear anyone take you up on your challenge.
We'll, we'll see who can get more citations.
Alright, very good.
Lieutenant says no problem.
He said no problem, he's out of here.
I, I have a question. So, uh, the lieutenant sergeant, if you're gonna be undercover, correct?
Yeah, we had plans on, Jared was gonna be selling corn. Mister Hernandez, he left, he was gonna be selling, um, undercover as a, uh, selling ice cream, and then I will go around another car, and then Michael, I don't know if we can figure out what to do with Michael, cause he, everyone knows him, so it'd be hard to disguise him. So they would just go around, if they see people lighting illegal fireworks, they would, you know, we wouldn't stop them, they would send a notice, like we normally do.
So Ricky and, and Justin, if it comes down to tie, you can cite these three for illegal vendors in the city of Longdale. You'll win.
But just for the record, we will not be vending, we'll just be undercover.
You're gonna have a little something to sell, right?
We, we, they'll, we have a saying that we're gonna say. I'm putting it out there so everybody knows the public. And as another side note, we are definitely gonna be noticing with the signs, I'll work with Ahmad, we'll put them out ahead of time. A couple, at least a month and a half, we'll send out blasts to everyone to warn them about fireworks. We're gonna let everybody know ahead of time, I'm gonna work with Michael and Public Works a couple of months, so everyone knows, hey, this is gonna happen. We're gonna put something, we'll do a public service announcement with Anita and Cable, we'll really try to get the word out there. Hopefully, we don't have to cite people, but we are gonna go out there and help out the sheriffs this year.
Could we also try to put those electronic signs on Inglewood?
Yes, yes.
Since we don't have banners.
Yes, we'll do it on the Hawthorne Prairie, and I don't know how many we have, maybe we have to rent some, and then also Inglewood. And we'll do our best to get out the information ahead of time.
I have a quick question for Mike on the youth parade. Um, are you planning to do the parade committee? And maybe the committee could work with you on which direction the parade should go?
Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and City Council. Am I on here?
Yeah, yeah, we can hear you, Mike.
Yeah, we're discussing that internally. With the four month, it's just barely four months to put this into place, we're not sure if we'll do that. This may just need to be a one-hundred percent staff effort. We have some ideas. I have one proposal that I'd like to give to Sean and the council at some point. Uh, I could give you a brief summary right now, but our thought would be to start at Alondra Park, and, and just to correct, uh, one thing that, uh, city manager said is the entire north side of the park will be closed, just not the corner. So they're gonna be closed all the way to the south through the baseball diamonds, all the way to the east, beyond the pickleball courts, beyond the restrooms, possibly to that other area which is, uh, secluded where the baseball diamond is on the east side of the park. So it's gonna be a huge closure, it could be for up to three years. It's gonna be at least two years. Uh, but one, one method that we discussed this morning with Sean was, uh, starting in the same location. We have to move all the operations out into the street, there'll be no park available. Uh, the south side of the park will still be available, that's way too far for us. And possibly taking it, uh, east on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, uh, north on Hawthorne Boulevard. We would cross Marine, uh, make a left on one forty-seventh slash Longdale Way, come down Longdale Way and, and finish here at the Civic Center. The big area of contention is, uh, how can we power that show wagon? Show wagon cannot be powered anywhere else where there's not electricity. For example, if we wanted to move this thing out onto the street and do all that stuff, we couldn't power the show wagon from the street unless we found a resident or somebody to do that from. That's the advantage of Longdale Park, but we could power the show wagon here. It would cut the route in, probably in about half. It might be fifty-five or sixty percent of the route, you know, that old route was two point two miles, very, very long route. So we think it's something that can work. We think it's something that might be a less expensive option, uh, cause we're not gonna need as many deputies out on the road as we do for the full route. There'll be fewer street closures. Uh, that to me seems like the most logical and fast-moving, uh, resolution that we could have for this.
Could we end at Jane Adams? Would that be a possibility? Where, that way it'll give, we could do an, an additional program right after the parade for an hour or so, like we did at, at Alondra? Just think about it.
Yeah, yeah, that's something to think about, you know, but, but I think one thing that would be an advantage to the city is fewer street closures. Uh, it would take us a little bit farther north than usual, you know, typically you make that right hand on, uh, Marine before we go east. So we're gonna take it, what is, uh, Marine to one forty, it's another three or four blocks. That's gonna keep us on Hawthorne Boulevard a little bit longer, but keep us off of Marine and Prairie. And, uh, it, it might be, uh, the best route at this time. And to, to put together, uh, during a short period of time, and I spoke to Sean this morning as well, we're gonna try to get together with, uh, the sheriff's department real soon. And to see what their, uh, see what their safety analysis is on this.
Thank you.
So the majority is going down Prairie? The parade, I think, coming up to one forty-seventh? Or is it coming down Hawthorne?
To Longdale Way, yeah.
Okay, so it's coming down.
Hawthorne, Hawthorne to Longdale Way and make a left.
Not Prairie, okay.
Right here.
Okay.
So we'll be totally off of Marine, we'll cross Marine, but we won't be on Marine.
Okay, yeah.
And totally off of Prairie. You know, we all know that Prairie's a dead zone.
Yeah, I was gonna say it was a dead zone.
Yeah, and this is actually one the city council looked at maybe four to six years ago.
I remember that.
And you remember that, yeah. Councilman Osborne was on, the mayor Pullen Miles was, of course, and the idea was, you know, uh, to try to stay off of Hawthorne Boulevard as much as possible. That's why I bring this out front, we will. Is, the business owners don't like this parade, they have to shut down or, uh, they have to reduce their activity. Uh, even though people can park in the back of these businesses and still access the businesses, it's not a real popular thing with the business owners on Hawthorne. That's why I wanted to bring this out upfront, is that we, we're gonna be on Hawthorne just a little bit longer, two to three blocks. Whatever it is, it's from Marine to, to Longdale Way.
Maybe you could utilize where Rogers Anderson, give it more utilization as you were requesting, Robert.
Yeah.
If that was on, near Prairie, so.
Yeah.
It's a lot of open space. Okay, thank you for that re- um, report. I don't think we need to, um, there's, there's no actions, um, here, but thank you for that, um, report. Alright, so that was under city manager's report, right? Okay, now we're on items from the city council members. Let's see, you don't have anything to share. Councilman Pat Kearney.
I attended several things, meetings and events. The first one was the Lobby Trust and Oversight Committee meeting. We're happy that day we didn't pay any money out. I, I walked through the, the Veterans Field of Honor, it's beautiful at night and daytime. I attended Senator Bradford's turkey giveaway, and I met, uh, seven people from Longdale receiving the turkey and the goodies. And then attended, hmm, last Friday, Angel Tree, which is a fantastic event. We had a couple of staff oos there, but, you know, that, that, that gotta be strained out. And I want to tell the residents to not, write down tonight, Santa's Lay starts tonight, it goes for nine consec- not consecutive, nine weeknights. And the city council's night is this Friday at five thirty at City Yard. With that, I'll pass it on, Robert.
Okay, Councilwoman Suarez.
So I've been a bit out of commission, but I did, um, I did get to see the Field of Honor, it was beautiful. Um, and then I attended, um, I believe the twenty, or November eighteenth, um, the South Bay Cities Council Government Board of Directors meeting. Um, prior to that, they did have an open house for their new office, um, which, uh, they hadn't been able to really share yet, but due to COVID, they rented that space right when COVID hit. So, um, I got to meet with, um, community stakeholders and whatnot, um, so it was a really nice event. Um, and then I did want to bring up, um, one thing that, um, just some news from the city of Hawthorne. They actually did a, uh, they have a twelve-unit pallet shelter that opened last week. So, um, that was news for them, um, but with that, I'll pass it on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Quavis.
Um, this summer, city of Longdale participated in the American Cancer Society Relay for Life, and so they sent us a thank you certificate, uh, for participating. We raised about twenty-five hundred dollars, um, and, uh, for this as a special program. Um, hopefully, I could continue to participate on behalf of the city this coming year. Um, and I'll, if you guys want to join me, that would be great. Um, I would like to thank the following people for sending their emails today. Um, Elsa, Danielle, Ephraim, Jay, and Esther. I dare read all five, uh, emails regarding the parks. Thank you.
I did read all five emails regarding the parks. Thank you. Also, I got to see the Field of Honor in the evening or mid, about eight, nine o'clock. It was beautiful with the lights. Thank you very much. I think this one was the best out of all of the ones I've seen so far. And don't forget, Pat mentioned it, Santa's Lay. We all work hard on being part of the program. And I participated or I attended the Budget Committee two weeks ago. That will be all. Thank you.
And thank you for coordinating the Relay for Life. We appreciate that. Take a lead on that. That's you. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman.
Thank you. I several times came up to the Field of Honor, both during the day and during the evening time. Ran into a very interesting gentleman one night whose relative uncle is on our board, our memorial wall. And come to find out, he is up here every twenty-four hours. Sometimes doesn't get out of his vehicle, but most of the time he does and walks up to the wall. His relative was actually born on Christmas Day, and he says in Christmas night, he always comes up with a cupcake that he eats half, and he leaves here at the wall for his uncle. And it gave me chills listening to him. He himself was a veteran, a Purple Heart. He had three Purple Hearts himself. So that was really touching and to hear his thankfulness that we do this. And yet, at the same times, he says, you look at that as flags and and that makes you proud. And he says, I hear men's voices. And that was hard for me to listen to when he started telling me what he heard at our Field of Honor. Very touching, very emotional, that's for sure. I also attended the Angel Tree, beautiful event. I love the fact that our community comes out. They're very well behaved. They're very appreciative. And yes, there might have been a couple of hiccups, but for the most part, that is an event that I'm absolutely proud of as well as the different things that we get to do as as a community to come together. But that's one of our favorites. And hopefully, the next couple of weeks, Santa Claus will be coming in front of all of residents' houses to spread a little cheer, not just for the parents or for the children, but also for the parents. So enjoy Longdale. It's there is a little bit of work that goes in into this to put it on, and we're quite excited to share it with the community. Thank you.
Thank you. So I also attended the the Fields of Honors. Very nice display as it is every year. This year, I actually got more comments about it this year from residents for than I have in previous years, and they really wanted to express their appreciation to the city for doing what may seem to be a small thing. But for them, in honor of their loved ones is a is a a big thing for the loved ones who have served this nation. So particularly, three separate residents had expressed their appreciation for the Fields of Honor. So we will continue to do to do that and appreciate the staff for putting that together and actually making sure that the flags are lined up properly because you can't just throw them up, you know. Anyone can't just put those up there. You got to really, you know, put some attention to details. And so I want to thank the the staff for putting up the the flags in such a wonderful display. I also attended the sanitation, the regular meeting of the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. There was not a lot going on, but just a lot of trash talking.
Talking, yeah.
Like, I've used that before. It worked the last time. Also, now that I realize it, I also attended a, what I didn't know was happening, a meeting for the Metro reconfirming our representative to the Metro Board, which is Mayor James T. Butts. Luckily, I was available. I got a call from James T. Butts and said, we need a quorum. Like, okay, I'm not supposed to be at a meeting right now. Apparently, they was having a meeting to reaffirm our member for the the South Bay region. It's actually South Bay in the the west side as well, represented to the Metro. And so we did reach a quorum, and he was reaffirmed as the representative for our area, for the South Bay and the the west, West Los Angeles Metro representatives. So congratulations to to Mr. Butts, and of course, we will, we have him on our plans of our schedule of folks to meet with in terms of our Metro concerning the the sea line extension. So we will be meeting with him at at some point as we make our rounds to to meet with all of the board members of Metro and certainly with our board member, Mayor James T. Butts. I also attended the Angel Tree Lighting Ceremony, our event. Great event, you know. Little rain, but little rain has never stopped a good time. The children was having a good time, and we had a a great turnout. Our state and federal official was present, we had representatives there, and so we had a good good time. And I want to thank the staff for putting that event together because it was raining, no hazard pay. Right. And it was cold, right. But a good time was had by all, and that was the most important thing. So I want to want to thank everyone for that. So those are the events that I have attended.
One more thing.
Yes, sir.
The Field of Honor, maybe City Manager would take this one. Wasn't it nationally recognized on? Who? The Field of Honor?
Yes, I sent the council an update on that. I think it was mentioned on a national nationally syndicated program. I sent you guys an update on that. I think it was last week or so. The Field of Honor was mentioned.
Nice. Okay, so that's all I have. So that would be the reports from Mayor and the council members. So before we adjourn, we want to adjourn this meeting in honor of Charles Mac McCurry. They call him Mac for short. Everyone knows him as the the Mac Old Time Radio Museum owner. He recently passed away Sunday, November the twenty-seventh. So we want to adjourn this meeting in his memory. This past April, the city recognized his hundredth birthday of a longtime resident, Charles Mac McCurry, also known as Mac, and we're sad to announce that he passed away, like I said, Sunday, November twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Years ago, as the owner of the Mac's Old Time Radio Museum in Longdale, he donated his collections of antique radios to the City of Longdale. These special radios are on display at Longdale City Hall because of his generosity and are now part of his legacy in Longdale. Mac served his country as a World War II veteran. Known throughout the city for his infectious smile, his kind demeanor demeanor and his generous heart will be missed. On behalf of the City of Longdale, we offer our condolences to his family as we adjourn the Longdale City Council meeting of December fifth, twenty-twenty-two, in memory of Charles Mac McCurry. And we will adjourn in his memory. And by the way, his date of birth was April twenty-first, nineteen-twenty-two to November twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-two. Okay. And with that, the next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six-thirty PM on Monday, December nineteenth in the Longdale City Council Hall chambers. It is now eight-fifty-one. This meeting is adjourned.